Good evening, welcome to the school committee meeting of Thursday, March 29, 2018. We are going to go into executive session and invite all of you back in here in about eighteen minutes. Seventeen and a half. Okay, so I need a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Starks.
Second.
Second by Dr. Seuss.
For what cause?
Do we have to read the...
To discuss security of Arlington Public Schools if held an open meeting may have a detrimental effect. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
We have another doctor at the table.
Roll call.
Yeah, new doctor.
Roll call, doctor.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. The yeses have it. We are now in executive session. So only those who are here for purposes of discussion of security should be in the So we're all reeling, the Red Sox lost six to four. They were winning four nothing. We'll get over it.
It's only the first game.
Only the first game. So we are here tonight to honor Cindy Starks for her nine years of service on the Arlington School Committee, and we're going to begin by resolutions by members of our state delegation who came right from the State House to this ceremony. So I'm going to call up Cindy Friedman, Senator Cindy Friedman, and Representative Sean Garbley. Why don't you, you've got to go by the microphone. We should start with the Senator. So we're going to start with Senator Friedman, and then we'll go with Representative Garbley.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the school committee. I'm happy to be here. You know how people start with, "I remember when you were this little." Well, I remember Cindy's first campaign, and I remember being in your kitchen and celebrating mightily, and I was happy then that you won, and I'm happy now that you stayed. And so I have a resolution from the Senate, and it is signed by the President of the Senate and myself and the wonderful Senate Clerk, and it is, it says, "In recognition of your many years of dedicated service in support of Arlington schools, students and families as a member of the Arlington School Committee." And what's really nice about it is the words are true. We really appreciate everything that you've done and all your service and all your caring and your commitment. So sorry to see you go, but we wish you the best of luck.
Very well said. Thank you, Senator. Cindy, we're going to miss you. Ever since you first were sworn into the school committee, my phone certainly hasn't stopped ringing, whether it was around classroom size or the local aid formula or you name it, reading, ELL. You have cared for so many issues and really got involved in so many issues your time on the school committee. You really have been a tremendous champion for every student that has articulated through this system. We have been so lucky to have you. And I know your husband and your mom is here, which I was happy to see, because I think we all know who are in public service, that you really give so much. But it's you, it's your kids, it's your husband, it's your family and your friends. You have sacrificed so much to do this job, and I know it's a job you have loved to do. And when I was parking my car, I saw you coming into the building. And you know, when the governor leaves his office, they call it the lonely walk, and you were kind of taking that lonely walk. And I hope when you were walking up the stairs, you were reflecting on your years of service. And I hope, because it is, can be sad, and I hope that when you were walking up here, what went into your mind is that you came and you did and you made a difference in kids' lives who went through the Arlington Public Schools. So like Senator Friedman, I want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You don't get paid, but at the end of your service, you get a chair. So that's our, that's our token of gratitude. I think what we do now is, I'll start, and then everyone can go around and say a few words, but I first met Cindy Starks in 2003 when your...
Son.
Your son.
Yeah.
So there was a, there was no life-threatening allergy policy in the Arlington Public Schools at all. And Cindy organized a group of moms and parents to come to the school committee room, and I think it went to the Policies and Procedures Subcommittee, which I chaired that year, and we worked together on the life-threatening allergy policy that had huge impact. And you know, a few years later, I had children born, and two of them have life-threatening allergies. So thank you for all you did for my kids and for all the kids in Arlington. And then, of course, Cindy ran, served three terms. Cindy and I were soulmates in elections, and things got so bad, she told me one year, why don't you just campaign with me, Jeff? Just, it's going to go a lot better for you if you just, just partner up with me. In fact, I remember one election night, I was working at your house on the election and making phone calls, and I think A, the whole family sat down for pasta, and Cindy put us, put a plate in front of me. That's a fond memory. So I have wonderful memories of working with Cindy and being a partner with Cindy and learning a lot from Cindy. And the one thing about Cindy Starks, total advocate for teachers and kids, total advocate for the schools, no interest at all in compromise with the town side, no interest at all in compromise with the, you know, anybody. It's, it's, it's more money for kids and more money for schools, and that's the kind of person you want on the school committee. So thank you for all you've done for our kids and my kids. So thank you.
So I'm keeping my remarks very brief, because someone is always upset at us if we're running beyond our...
Good chair.
But I just want to say thank you. I've learned so much from listening to you year after year at this point, and I, one of the things I really take away is your willingness to speak up and your, and to dive deep even into the thickest and thorniest of issues. And I just, I appreciate, you've basically been a role model, and I appreciate your doing that, and thank you for everything I've learned.
Thanks.
Cindy, you and I have had ups and downs, but it's always been professional, great sense of humor, strong advocate for teachers and stuff, and you and I even got our hands slapped by the state over an issue. Now you can talk to whoever you want, wherever you want, you don't have to worry about it. Congratulations, thank you for everything.
Thanks.
When I first met you, Cindy, you were just this wonderful, passionate, and knowledgeable person coming out of the private sector who cared passionately about education, worked very hard to learn about it. And then you got elected to the school committee, which immediately disqualified you for serving on the State Board of Education. Then you got a job teaching math in Lexington, which doubly disqualified you from the State Board of Education, which means that the more you know, the more disqualified you are to set... Which is what's wrong with the state, but it's what, everything is what's right about you. You have been a fantastic colleague. You're one of the reasons why I've run for reelection, because I actually, I really enjoy coming and seeing you every couple of weeks, and I'm going to miss my friend.
Thank you.
I remember meeting you four years ago when I was running for school committee at Starbucks, and you emphasized something that I have taken on my own, which is how important it is to be a liaison, for school committee members to be liaisons between the administration and the community, that you are really the voice that people count on to be able to communicate their concerns. People can come to meetings, but they also really rely on you, and I, I have loved that advice, and I've loved watching the passion and how articulate you've been, and yeah, so it's, it's, it will be, well, I mean, we're looking forward to the next member, but it'll be maybe a little less fun at times, having you gone, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, and I first was exposed to Cindy back in the fiscal, the last fiscal crisis, hopefully the last one for a while, that we had in town when things were dire and we had to, you know, fundraise $600,000 because otherwise we weren't going to have Jim and all sorts of other nasty stuff. And Cindy was such a strident and strong leader then, and then we went into the override campaign, which she led from the school committee side, and was just a terrific leader in helping to rally the town around that and come up with a solution. And so the town is very grateful for your role in that and grateful for all of your service. I've only had two years with you by my side, but I've definitely appreciated your strident voice for kids. Thank you.
Yeah, I would love to. I want to thank Cindy too. I really enjoyed our work together. You've been on the committee nine years, this is my 10th, so really, we've been sort of a, as a school committee administration team, and I really have appreciated your honesty, the passion you have, and your sense of humor. You really are really a pleasure to work with. And I, as, as an administrator here, I really also appreciate the fact that you bring the school perspective. You know, being a math teacher, I can relate to that, and, and I think that that new career for you has been really not only a wonderful thing for you and the students you teach, but it's certainly been a wonderful thing for our school system as well because of that perspective you have. So, you know, I, it's, tonight's sort of a bittersweet night. I know that you're going to stay involved because there's something else on the agenda later on, but I just want to thank you very much for all that you've, you've done to support me and to support the schools.
Thank you.
All right, did you want to say anything, Cindy, or no?
I promised myself I wouldn't get teary, but it's really hard not to. It's been a great nine years. I have learned so much. This has informed my teaching. You know, I became a teacher and a school committee member the same year, and so it's kind of been hand in hand. And I always thought that they would go hand in hand, but when my kids left the schools, it was just so hard to kind of, you know, you lose touch, and I just felt like that touch was something that was really important for me to be on school committee, and I felt like this was a good time, you know, it was a good transition time. I think the one thing I just want to say is that I feel like over those nine years, we have really come together, and I want everyone to remember that as a school committee, we are nothing without each other, right? That the, the strength of this committee is the committee, and all of the work we've done to make it a strong committee is, is what makes all the difference. The focus that we have on kids and, and learning and making sure that that's always the thing we're talking about, I feel like that has really changed us, and I feel like that has really strengthened us, and I, I just really am so excited for, God, you guys have so much work to do. And I really, I'm looking forward to hearing about everything, you know, the, all the elementary rebuilds, the Gibbs, the new high school, dealing with enrollment, seeing where enrollment goes, but I know that the strength of this committee, just how, how strong we are, and just remember that it's, you're nothing alone, but together, we have so much, and we can do so much, and I really feel like that is what has made the schools better. It's all of us working together, and I just, I know that it'll continue, and, and I, I'm excited to kind of watch from the sidelines, so keep up the great work.
Thank you.
All right, we'll, we have, we'll take a little break.
Is that what I was supposed to do, Karen? Yeah. Well, no, first, we're going to, we're going to, there's a motion to appoint Cindy Starks to the Vision 2020 Standing Committee. Motion by...
So moved.
Dr. Se, Paul Schlickman, second by Dr. Seuss. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, passes unanimously. Okay, good luck on the Vision 2020 Standing Committee. Keep us posted. I went to the meeting the other night, it was lively. Okay, we're going to take a break and eat some cake, and then we're going to have public participation. Does that sound okay?
Sounds good.
Because I want your approval.
It's a bonus to get cake.
Okay, so we're going to take a little break. Sean, and then do we need, do I need adjourn for a break? No, no, just take, we'll take a break. Yeah, five-minute recess to eat cake. All right, thank you. And Cindy's mother and her husband are here, and A, we want to thank you for...
Yes, giving all your...
Please tell Ian and Morgan that we're grateful for their lending, lending their mom to us for the past nine years. Thank you. Okay. Thank you for indulging all of us tonight, and have all the cake you want, all the fruits, part of the, part of the festivities. So we're here for public participation.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Before we start, may I have a point of personal privilege?
Yes, sir.
I, I come here from work every day, and today at school, we were celebrating the opening day of the Red Sox, which didn't turn out so hot, but my attire represents my work attire today.
Well, I think that's, I think that looks perfectly appropriate. And you know, okay, so we're out, while we're on that little segue, Jennifer Seuss, Dr. Seuss wants everyone in town to know that she was on the team that won the trivia B, number one, her, Joe Cuero, and Dean Carmen, the treasurer. They all got together, one from the, yeah, three different elected officials, right? Did you want to talk about your big win?
Well, I, I do feel a little bit silly, because I specifically said I didn't want to be in the school committee team, because I'm not that good.
Motion to censure.
But, but I actually, I do, I do feel that I contributed a little bit, although it was mostly not me. So I feel good about the win, but I, anyway, I hadn't planned it to be this way. I hadn't planned to be off the school committee and then help out, but...
Well, congratulations to that team. And our team...
And your team.
Our team won best costume, designed by, by, by Kirstie Allison-Ampy. Our team, our team got knocked out in the first round, right away, almost by the third question, we were gone.
No, we, we were way ahead to the last question.
The last question, yeah.
It was, it was that alleged current affairs question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It was about movies, and who has time to watch movies?
Yeah, we got committee members, we got meetings.
Wait, okay, so we got knocked out in the first round, we were doing okay, and then we really...
But tell them what your costume was, it was very clever.
You want to talk about the costume?
Okay, so our name was Growing by Peeps and Bounds, because that's what our schools are doing. And I used, I bought 20 or 30 boxes of peeps and stuck them on things. And Jeff wore...
A hat.
A hat, which had many, many peeps on it, and Paul wore both a hat and a signboard with many peeps on it. And the peeps were all doing things, they had iPads, they had laptops, they had books, they had...
Oh, I didn't realize that.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I didn't see that.
These are artistic peeps.
Oh, I didn't see that.
Yeah, there were, there were peeps with art, doing art, there were peeps writing stories, there were peeps...
Doing gymnastics?
Doing gyma, no, no, peeps doing, but there were peeps doing, playing, doing gym.
Oh, wow.
And, oh yeah, they were very, very academic peeps.
Where are they now?
They are still at home in my living room.
Can you comment on your costumes?
Yes, yes.
Yours looked great. Yours and yours look strange.
It was fun.
That's it. No, it was a wonderful time.
That's the best part, right?
Bill participated as well on the...
With the rotary, we were the plungers. I'm ashamed to say, the question we didn't get was, who wrote "Goodnight Moon"? My daughter's a school librarian, she instantly texted me and said, "Dad, you're a continual embarrassment."
Tough, tough, tough. All right, now we get on to the meeting, public participation. Oh, Sarah Wilkinsen.
Sorry, Wilkinsen.
Wilkinsen, no, no, got it.
Is it okay if three of us just come up?
Yep, come on up, come on up, come on up.
Thank you.
This is Sarah, it's not Sarah, Diana?
Sarah.
Sarah, okay.
Diana. And Larry.
Oh, Larry, oh, the first three on the list, okay.
Yeah.
Great.
We got here early.
Yeah, you did, right, fair enough.
So my name is Sarah Wilkinsen, I'm a parent of two Thompson students, fourth grader and a first grader, and thank you, we appreciate the opportunity to, to be here tonight, and we just wanted to put on record and read to you the letter that we shared with Dr. Bodie and the school committee, and just to note, you know, we have several other fourth grade parents with us tonight supporting us in this, our request. And this may feel like deja vu, because this exact request was made just a few years ago before the rebuild, before the addition. Juliette, at the time, was here advocating for her oldest child, and so, and if, if it's okay with you, I'll just go ahead and read this first letter that we sent on March 5th. Dear Dr. Bodie and school committee members, we are writing on behalf of the fourth grade parents at Thompson Elementary School. A majority of the current fourth grade students were the first class to enter the new school in September 2013. As parents, we were thrilled to have the opportunity for our children to enter a brand-new facility to begin their lifelong learning. Thompson is an exceptional and diverse community of teachers, administrators, families, and students. We have come together in recent years to advocate for an additional renovation to the school to accommodate Arlington's school-aged population growth. With this addition, Thompson now has the capacity to provide, provide exceptional learning and enrichment space for all of its almost 500 students. We are so pleased and want to fully utilize the school's new capacity. We continue to see enrollment increase, both at Thompson and in the district as a whole. This year, the three fourth grade classrooms at Thompson were the largest in the district at the start of the school year, with class sizes of 25 and 26 students. Across the district, other fourth grade sections have class sizes ranging from 16 to 25 as of September 2017, as detailed in the monthly enrollment charts of schools. The attached chart, which was sent attached, we didn't attach it to what you have in front of you, does not include additional enrollments that occurred during the school year. We know that these additional enrollments, enrollments have resulted in one fourth grade classroom at Thompson accommodating 27 students. Beginning this year, Thompson has four classes for each grade, kindergarten, first grade, second, third, and fifth, except for the fourth grade, with only three sections. Given the size of other grades and the enrollment projections, four classes per grade will be the new norm going forward. If our children enter fifth grade with only three sections, they will be the only grade in at least a six-year span to graduate Thompson without a fourth section available to put together smaller classes. Three years ago, when the two fourth grade classes, Thompson classes were at 29 and 30 kids each, those parents got together, just like we are doing now, and began advocating for the quality of their children's education, resulting of the construction of six additional classrooms at Thompson. The new addition has provided the community with enough classrooms to accommodate four classes per grade. Parents and administrators and others worked extremely hard to make this project happen and to avoid this exact scenario, overcrowded classrooms. With the addition, Thompson now has an empty available classroom. We have solved the most complicated challenge, available classroom space. The community has made great strides to support our students, and we do not want to reverse that progress. We are, we are requesting one additional full-time teacher for the Thompson School to provide four classes per grade beginning in September 2018. This hire would result in current fourth grade expanding to four sections as it moves up into fifth grade, bringing Thompson's class sizes in line with the rest of the district. There are other factors to consider that may create unique challenges within the Thompson school community, which I'm sure you're all very well aware of, making this hire even more pertinent. These factors include our Title I eligibility. Thompson is one of three Title I schools in the district. However, the fourth grades in the other Title I schools in the district have class sizes of 16 to 22 students. Thompson's fourth grades are significantly higher with a student count of 25 to 27, and this cohort has had large class sizes, 24-plus, for each year beginning in kindergarten. The second point that I want to make is the economic status of our students. Thompson's has the highest percentage of economically disadvantaged students and the highest percentage of students classified as high needs, at 31.5%. Additionally, Thompson's students who qualify for free or reduced lunch is almost double and in some cases triple the percentage of other schools in our district. We have an exceptional community that provides support for families who are food insecure. However, this does put some additional strain on our teachers, and smaller class sizes reduces the challenges. And the final point is that our, our student profiles and our ELL students. At Thompson, the percentage of students whose first language is not English is 17.4% and 12.4% are classified as English-language learners. Hardy has the second highest percentages, however, class sizes are below 23 in all classrooms and at 22 in fourth grade. Again, we are writing to request the addition of one classroom teacher to the Thompson School staff for the 2018-2019 school year. This will be required, assuming things move as they are, beginning in the fall of 2019, given our current K through three class sizes. The town has shown its support for Thompson by funding the beautiful new building and the recent addition. Let's not let it go to waste. And then I just say, we're going to, we're going to plan to attend the meetings, and here we are. Thank you very much.
Did I just want to say anything?
So it's, maybe you continue down the list of your correct. So we sent that letter March 5th to Dr. Bodie and to the school committee. We have received Dr. Bodie's answer, which I'll read to put in context our response. Dear Thompson parents, thank you for your thoughtful letter advocating for an additional teacher for next year's fifth grade. I recognize that two of the three current fourth grade's class sizes each have 26 students, which is one student more than the other large fourth grade classes in the district. Both Bishop and Peers have a fourth grade class with 25 students. To help with the fourth grade classes at Thompson this year, we hired a large class teaching assistant, which we did not do at Bishop and Peers. There has been some volatility of students leaving and enrolling over the last few months in the Thompson fourth grade, though the net class sizes have remained about the same. We wonder if this trend will continue over the upcoming months, resulting in either larger or smaller class sizes. In the 2019 budget, we have identified funds for three reserve teachers to address enrollment growth issues in the district. Right now, we expect that one teacher will be needed at the kindergarten level, leaving two reserve positions to cover not only enrollment growth issues at the elementary level, but at the secondary level as well. Should we receive additional Chapter 70 funds, state allocation for education, priorities for the extra funding include another reserve teaching position and a preschool teacher. It is becoming clearer, however, that we will need to use one of the three reserve positions in the 2019 budget for a preschool teacher if we do not receive the additional Chapter 70 funds. Should we receive the additional funding, we will have two additional reserve teaching positions. We will certainly consider the class size situation for next year's the fifth grade at Thompson when deciding where additional teachers are most needed. A decision about the allocation will need to wait until later this spring, when we know whether we will receive the additional Chapter 70 funding. At that time, we will evaluate the needs of the system. If additional students enroll in the fourth grade at Thompson this spring, that increase will strongly influence the decision. It is also important to note that the special circumstances at Thompson have been recognized in the 2019 budget with the allocation of funds for a second social worker.
My name is Larry Slotnick. I live at 94 Grafton Street, and my son Eli is a fourth grader at Thompson. He started in the new kindergarten class five years ago, and my daughter is in first grade there. So I'm going to read into the record a March 28th response to Dr. Bodie's letter. Dear Dr. Bodie, thank you for your response to our letter regarding the additional classroom teacher for the Thompson fifth grade. It's helpful to hear that there are slots avail, that there are slots for a few additional teaching positions for the 2018-2019 school year. For all of the reasons previously stated, we feel there is a strong case for utilizing one of those spots for an additional fifth grade teacher at Thompson. We would like to reiterate a few specific concerns related to Thompson's enrollment challenges. As you know, Thompson has a dynamic and diverse population, and we are very familiar with the challenges this can create for our teachers, aides, and others. The challenges are only exacerbated with higher enrollment. We worry that more time is spent on behavior management rather than teaching with class sizes of 26 and 27 students. Thompson's fourth grade is the largest grade across town with only three sections. We are in the fortunate position to have the space at the school to add an additional classroom. Let's utilize every square foot of the beautiful new addition to support our children's educational opportunities. We are grateful for the addition of the teaching assistant this year. However, that was a temporary solution and provides brief support in each of the three classrooms throughout the day. The sustainable solution is reducing overall class size. Current enrollment in Thompson fourth grade totals 79 students. This means that it is the largest cohort at any of the Arlington Elementary Schools with only three sections. Our current fifth grade cohort has 81 students, and they have four classroom teachers. It is very likely, given enrollment trends over the last several years, that Thompson will have at least two new students enroll in the fourth grade during this year or over the summer to enter fifth grade. There is little evidence that the class size will decrease. We are aware that Ms. Donato has requested an additional social worker for Thompson and support this request, in addition to one new classroom teacher. The need for this additional professional only confirms that the social and emotional challenges are growing, which makes our school vulnerable. Smaller class sizes allow teachers to address more of these challenges, helping out our school and ultimately... helping out our school and ultimately the town. The challenges roll over to other areas of the school as well. The current classrooms are not equipped with enough space for more than 25 or 26 children. There are not enough cubbies or hooks for children to hang coats and backpacks. Additionally, larger classes create challenges for the grade during specials such as PE, music, art, and library. We will plan to attend the March 29th school committee meeting, along with other parents from Thompson's 4th grade, to voice our request. We would also like to speak to you in person in order to express in more detail our concerns and arguments. We continue to be committed to working with you and the school committee to ensure that we are providing the best learning environment for our students. Thank you for your time and consideration for our request.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next, Juliette Moore?
Hello, everyone. Juliette Moyer. I have three students in the Arlington Public Schools. And I've sat here before, but let the record show this is the first time I'm gonna come and ask for something that costs $0, which is very exciting for me. Jane Morgan and I were talking earlier this winter about the importance of outdoor time, specifically about the importance of outdoor recess at all the schools whenever possible. This led us to look into the Arlington Public Schools' policies to see if they had an official policy or a set of guidelines around recess that helped administrators make the call about when to send kids outdoors and when it was necessary to keep them in. And seeing no policy, we looked at our neighboring communities to see if anything was available. And we found that our neighbors in Lexington and Belmont and Brookline had easy-to-find and easy-to-understand policies around this issue. Of note, most of these schools identified a feels-like temperature of around 20 degrees or higher as being consideration in making the determination that outdoor recess was a go for the day. So at this point, Jane and I decided that it would be a great idea to collect some data to see how Arlington Public Schools was doing in getting our kids out across town. And last night, we sent you all an email to all the school committee members, as well as the school, elementary school principals and Dr. Bodie summarizing that data. In short, we did take that data over 11 consecutive days at the end of January and into February. We found out that some schools went out as often as nine days and some schools as few as five days. And on the days that there were discrepancies, meaning that like some schools went out and some didn't, the feels-like temperature at 11:00 AM ranged from 23 degrees to 29 degrees. So if the feels-like temperature were the deciding factor, and we follow the guidelines that our neighboring schools went, follow, then all of our schools would have gone out nine out of 11 days. Of course, this is just like a snapshot of, you know, 11 days. And there are other factors that may be considered by elementary school principals when they're sending the kids out in winter. But if the whole winter trended like those 11 days, in the 73 or so days between December 1st and March 30th, students at the high-recess schools would get out 59 days, and students at the low-recess schools would get out 33 days to outdoor recess. And this represents a 55% difference, which is really, really significant. So today, Jane and I are asking that Dr. Bodie and the school committee work with our elementary school principals in drafting a set of guidelines that will both encourage outdoor recess whenever possible and promote equitable access to outdoor recess throughout the system. We'd be happy to provide or collect parent input, and we look forward to hearing your thoughts on the matter.
Thank you very much. Okay, we now move on to a presentation by John Denizio about comparing Gibbs and OMS clause.
What you had in your packet was just a simple spreadsheet that just showed five columns, and the first column being for each position this year at Gibbs, I mean at Odysseum, how many FTE there were. The next two columns were for next year, Odysseum and Gibbs, how many FTE there were. The next column was the change, the difference between the two years, which would be the total of FY '19 versus the total of FY '18. And the last column was just how many we accounted for in the budget. That is both the Gibbs and the Odysseum Middle School budget. So just to, just to highlight a couple of things. The, we broke them into sort of categories of what the positions were. You can see in the administration, there's a total of one new position, and that's, and that's the principal. Having a second building necessitated the need for a principal. I won't go through each category, because you can read it yourself, but I'll just highlight a couple of things. One of the, one of the marks is the nurse. You'll see that we have two this year and slated to have two next year, but there's only one. I mean, there was only a half, which would mean we would need a full-time position. There's only a half in the budget. That's, that hasn't been finalized yet. We're still working to find out if it is in fact gonna be two at Odysseum or if it's gonna be one and a half FTE at Odysseum. There is definitely gonna be a full-time at Gibbs. So that piece is still, is still hanging out there. The second piece is within reading. You may look and see that the add is, equals to what we have in the budget. But there's still some tweaking on where the FTEs are gonna wind up. It says on this report that right now, there's three and a half people providing reading support at Odysseum this year. There's, there's two reading teachers or reading specialists and one tutor. And next year, there's a total of four providing that support, which is a half-time add, but it says here that's only gonna be a half-time teacher and a half, and a part-time tutor at Gibbs. That hasn't been worked out exactly. That may end up being two teachers at Odysseum with a tutor and one at Gibbs with a tutor. But we just have that, that, it probably has been worked out, but I just didn't have it when I put this together. The next highlight I just wanted to point out, which was not all of my, all of these were highlighted on my slide, but when we go from color to black and white, I lost some of it, so sorry about that. You'll see that math support is highlighted, and it looks like there is no math support gonna be provided at Gibbs next year, because it says zero FTEs, but that isn't the case. The, the, the math support is gonna be there, but it doesn't require an FTE, because it's gonna be, it's gonna be provided by the math teachers during project block. So the support will be there, but it just doesn't require an additional FTE to, to do that, to accomplish that. So I just wanted to hit on that. The next part in the, in the specialist that looks a little bit out of whack is in the, is in the area of music. You may see that for, for music classes, chorus, that it looks like we have a .5 FTE in the budget, but don't, don't have it assigned anywhere. And then within band and orchestra, that we have a .1 and a .1 add that we didn't budget for. Those are sort of mixed, those are sort of blended together, because the chorus and band, I mean, I'm sorry, the band and orchestra piece are gonna need to be added at Gibbs, and they may in fact not be a .1. They may be a .2 for each of those. But those pieces are supposed, are gonna be blended in with that .5 add for, that shows up in the, in the Gibbs budget. And part of that, because of who goes where, may end up being technically at the elementary level. But we account for it here, because that's what's causing the need. The next area I wanted to point out was in the ACE program. You see that, you see that at zero FTE, just like in the math support. This is gonna be provided by teachers during the project block, so it doesn't require an FTE, but we'll still have the program going on there. In the special ed, I just wanted to point out one piece that the teachers and TAs piece doesn't include the specialized learning center. So you may see that there's nine and six TAs, nine teachers and six TAs at Odysseum this year. That actually doesn't include the REACH, Compass, and Summit program. I practiced that part, too, and I'm still screwing up. And then one last piece is the budgeted column adds up to 29.8, which is the total of what we are added for Gibbs plus Odysseum. If you were to add these numbers up, it only adds up to 29, because the .8 specialist piece that's added into the Odysseum budget hasn't been assigned yet. So there's not, not a spot for it here yet. So rather than put it on there and put, guess at where they're gonna go and then have to describe each one, I just thought I'd point it out. So the, the, yeah, in total, that's what it equals.
Bill, superintendent might have something to add to.
The, when you mentioned about ACE and the math support, theoretically possible, you'd have a student that would, for both, and so there's a choice thing. So they'd be end up being excluded without having a, I guess I'm directing this to the superintendent.
I don't think that would be the case.
Well, if they're gonna be both done during the same time.
Well, the way the schedule's working out right now is that there's going to be two pairs of project blocks in the schedule.
So that'll handle it. My other, maybe better asked later when we talk about the Gibbs Library. So I'll defer that to, at that point. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so there's a lot of confusion about the project blocks. It would be helpful to have Kristen come, you know, soon and explain that to us, and hopefully she'll explain it on April 2nd. Just to understand how that's gonna work, if kids are being pulled out for math support, do they miss part of the project team? Anyways, that's another conversation. John, on the, on the numbers, this is a good start, but I'd still like to actually see that this broken out in the budget presentation, because there's still some discrepancies in the budget. You had for administration, you had, you have $226,000 for, for Gibbs. That's a principal plus something else. Don't know what else is in there. So if we get that broken out, then we can maybe find where the money is going and make sure it's all going to the right place, and there's enough for everything. So another to-do for you. In the special education, on your current position control report, there's actually 10 teachers, special ed teachers, within Odysseum, not, not in the SLC programs. So don't know about that discrepancy. But that does, it does seem a significant imbalance to have six at Odysseum and six at Gibbs after. Is that really what we're doing?
We aren't going to have-
Not the SLCs, but the actual other special education teachers.
Well, pardon?
There would be at least eight.
Three learning specialists at 7th and 8th grade each, so that's six. And then the three remaining SLC teachers that are still over there, and additionally, the people who are assigned to Millbrook.
Yeah, I don't have SLC on, so that's probably what the-
Okay, thank you.
Just to go back, on the Metco social worker, it looks like you're taking the one person and .6 at one building and .4 at the other. Without making any judgments, isn't it feasible that it might need you to be full-time in the building on a, the way the kids are and the way things are going? I'm just concerned of dividing the person. Hopefully, other social workers, do we only have one Metco social worker, or do we have two?
We have one, and actually, the person also is available at the elementary level.
Okay. Okay, so the, there was another question, I'm sorry.
We've always had one, either a counselor or social worker. There's like a few years we did not, but that's just been, that's been our staffing for a long time.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Let's move on to the next. Thank you, John. Appreciate that. Next is the superintendent's report on interim goals. So I'm gonna turn it over to Superintendent Bodie.
Okay. There were three goals in particular to do it. So actually, since we're talking about Gibbs, this was actually one of my, the three goals that, not that, not that I don't give you reports on all of the goals, but of particular note this year. And the one about the practice goal with respect to the Gibbs, I'm sorry, the achievement goal. It is the development of the plan for the Gibbs School for all aspects: curriculum, operations, scheduling, and culture. And actually, you've been hearing parts of the reports almost all year long. I think that we're getting closer now to the schedule. We've hired someone to actually help with the scheduling. We were able to, in-house, be able to get to the point where we know that the six-day trimester schedule will work, but we had to find two. So there's lots of aspects to this. You've been hearing a lot about the, the program, the building itself and, but I think it will be, to Mr. Carden's point, I think what, what would be a very good idea, the plan has always been to do this anyway, is to have Kristen Di Francisco, who is the new principal, come to the school committee and give sort of a complete report. We're getting closer to more detail that we can share with people. In fact, this coming Monday night is going to be the next parent forum. And it's going to be at Stratton from 7:00 till 9:00 o'clock in the Stratton cafeteria. And some of you have come to those in the past. So the agenda for that is going to be hitting a lot of these, particularly the issue around curriculum. What we have been trying to do at Gibbs is to redesign the 6th grade program so that it would be a more transitional program for all students and not come into the, the exact model that we have for 7th and 8th grade. And what, how would that change from the current model of not just taking the 6th grade program and moving it over to Gibbs? There are a number of major components in this, which has had its domino effect on the schedule. One of which is that we have decided that the social-emotional programming that we would like to have at Gibbs is responsive classroom. That's a program that we have been growing in our elementary schools. They just happened, happened to have developed a middle school program just about the same time we were looking to see what programming we would like to have. And that involves a number of things. One of which is having a morning meeting. And the elementary schools that do have RC as part of their programming, they will have a morning meeting to start the day off. And, and there is a range of topics. It can be actually related to the curriculum, but it's really the way to be able to begin the day, setting students on the right tone and feeling for the day. So we're gonna put that in the schedule. Secondly, when we had the visioning sessions last year, strong, strong parental request for recess. We do not have recess at the middle school. And tonight, we're hearing more about recess. And by the way, we've had, the elementary principals and I, based on the research they did, did have a discussion about this. So, you know, they're, they're on board. They, they agree that recess is important. And they also concurred in terms of Gibbs that these, these students in 6th grade are not that much older than 5th grade students and could really benefit by that. So now you put another 20 minutes in the schedule. The other thing that we heard in the visioning is that we, what we're, we want students to have opportunities for projects, project learning. Not that our, our curriculum does not have that. In fact, Jason Levy's here, and he know, and he does projects in the 7th grade social studies, as they do in a lot of the, the subject areas at Odysseum. But having something that's a little bit more focused on eventual student agency in this, so that you begin with a more structured approach to how you work on a project. And then the next trimester, there's more release of responsibility to students, but you're teaching us, so the RC model, that you're always modeling the behavior that you want students to be able to emulate. And then by the time you get to third trimester, there's, there's more student choice. So the idea is we're trying to build in more opportunities for students to have engagement in project learning and to be able to also develop the executive functioning skills that are important for students to be able to organize their own, their work, their time, what, and, and to, to find things that they're- time, what, and, and to, to find things that they're really interested in learning more about beyond what we're learning in our, in our curriculum program. So you put those three things together, and it has a quite an effect in trying to how you set up a schedule. But we are, we are there now. And actually, at this meeting, we'll be able to show a sample student's schedule. We'll be looking at what a teacher's schedule would be like. And we've been having a lot of meetings all year talking about this in terms of, you know, comparability, equitability among teaching loads. So I, the, the aspiration for this school is that the students, when they come in as fifth graders, are going to go through an experience during the year in which they are going to develop the skills and, and habits of mind that are going to prepare them for a more secondary education. That's the goal. And secondarily, have come together as a class. So there are a lot of strong values and beliefs that are really underpinning of the work that's going on. And all of that takes time and has involved countless hours by many people. None the least is Kristen Di Francisco. She's just been working night and day, both balancing her job as a hardy principal as well as doing this work with teachers and with administration. So we are, we are moving along quite well. There are, doesn't mean there's still not things that we need to talk about. We're looking at stipends. We're going to be looking at extracurriculars. There, but in terms of the big rocks, if you could think of it that way, the big things are really getting to be in place, and that's a great thing. One of the things that's going to happen, and there's a letter that was sent out to all, actually, it was all fifth grade parents, but also all elementary parents were invited to this evening if they wanted to come and hear about it. But parents are going to go into the parent portal. It opens on April 3rd, and they are going to select a world language. We're going to be able to offer, we're hoping we're going to be able to offer all four. That's, that's dependent upon staffing and being able to find part-time people who can teach Mandarin, or a person can teach Mandarin. And they're also going to select whether a student is going to take band course or orchestra. They don't have to do either. And it, and so those choices are going to, we're asking parents to, to make. So right now, the plan is to offer the curriculum that is currently offered to sixth grade students. There may not be as much time on some of the, the specials that there are in the current program, but that's because there's only so much time in the day. And if you're going to put these other things in, you have to be able to, to balance that off. One thing that we do know is that we're going to, we're going to open next year and we're going to have this program, but we're going to be very reflective. And I, I, I don't think that this is something that's, that's potentially not going to change over the years as we learn and grow. That's exactly what the experience Needham had as they went through their process of developing this school, that you learn and then you change and you, you know, you constantly evolve the program. But right now, I'm feeling very, I think we're in a really good spot where, where we are. And what I think we'll do is we'll schedule one of the meetings probably in late April, early May, and have Ms. Di Francisco come in and talk a little bit more about this. Maybe we can also have some teachers from the leadership team come in, too. There is a leadership committee that's been working on this. So this is sort of an update, a verbal update where we are. And a lot of documentation, we'll give, give you copies of.
Any questions?
No, is that a question? I would like to see a written update on progress on sort of all the goals. And it can just be a very short blurb about what we're doing.
I can do that.
It doesn't have to, you know, obviously, it's not as extensive as we see.
Mm-hmm.
But, but I know there's some other important goals that I don't want to, that we have, some we've seen evidence of, some we haven't. I just, I don't know the status of everything.
Well, the other, one of the other goals has a lot to do with the, the building work that's been going on this year, which has been more than I think I anticipated it was going to take in terms of time. It's been, it's been quite, quite a lot of meetings. And in fact, that's something that's really impacted the other goal, which involves going around and doing walkthroughs. This year's not over yet, but I have to say that the, that all of the other commitments involved in these projects, it has impacted that at this point. Every month, set up, set up meet, set up times for school visits, and frequently, those get impinged upon by other things that need to be, other meetings. I can give you more of a summary of that, but I think I'd rather wait maybe another month or so just to see how things go over this next month. If that's all right with you.
So I sort of reminded us that we have another deadline on our goals, April 30th.
Mm-hmm.
To talk about, the following will be aligned with the vision of students as learners and global citizens.
Right.
And I know that there were some documents created internally that have already been sort of, there's progress. And I just would love to see where we are in terms of rolling out that vision.
Well, we'll, we'll all talk about that. We can talk about that tonight. By the way, thank you for those that came to the Vision 2020. And I also want to thank Vision 2020 for bringing members of the community together. We have been rolling out to different constituencies, teachers, administrators, school councils, Vision 2020, and, 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 by the way, this is now Dr. Neal.
Yes.
So he, he, last week, he defended his dissertation and did very well. We got, we got somebody who was his mentor attended, and he immediately called and said he just knocked it out of the park. So congratulations. (applause). Adrian, would you like to say a few comments? Because you've really been taking the lead on the, on this one. And also what our plan is for the end of April, the, is it the 29th is the next, is the, whatever that meeting is right after--
April 26th.
26th, the meeting right after the break. We actually have for the agenda, which we'll have to, you know, talk about, is, is having curriculum leaders come in and talk about actually a number of those things that we're doing. And maybe you can just give them a little bit of an overview.
Yeah, so, um, thank you. I know Cindy was at the Vision 2020 meeting, so she can talk about the feedback and the activities that we did in order to get the feedback from those community members based upon the current, the most updated draft of the vision of student as learner and vision of student as global citizen. We've also been working with the curriculum leaders to develop the, you know, power standards, the essential standards. We have made some modifications. Some of the goals that were listed were quite large. And so we've worked with Dr. Bodie in order to, you know, narrow them down to more manageable, so they're more manageable. And then we are going to discuss how we're going to continue that work next year so that we can make sure that we're, you know, doing it well. So we have been working on the, the power standards for the content area. So we'll be able to present that on April 26th, as well as the transferable skills that we've used the vision statement to help us to glean what those skills are, what the students will need, what, what that vision of the student will have to have in order to meet those attributes that are listed in the vision statement. And so, yeah, we, we have those, and, and I've already reached out to the curriculum leaders and the directors to have them come on April 26th. And we'll have a presentation ready, set, ready to go to, to discuss all the work that we've done around those, those items, those deliverables. So, and, and we're still working with the, the vision statement, so it's continuing to be vetted throughout the community with teachers and staff members and community members as well.
Actually, at Visions 2020, we, there were some great suggestions that came, came forward. And we, we were talking after, and while you, we certainly want to, we'll give you the drafts, and we'd love to have your input as well. This may be something that we might want to not rush and maybe roll in a little bit to next year. I think one of the things we've found with the, with the goals that we set for ourselves is that they're, they're much, we really cut off more than we could chew this year in terms of what, what we're doing. But the good news is, is that the work and the thinking has been very deep. So the next stage of it will go on the, on the backs of the work that has been thought through in terms of how we're going to organize thinking, presenting transferable skills and what that means in terms of the key learning standards for each, for each discipline at each grade level. Now, interestingly, I just learned this last week, that Department of Education has been working on a sort of a similar goal with respect to the, the Common Core standards. So I haven't seen any of the papers on that, but hopefully will over the next couple of months. But everyone is thinking the same thing, is that when you look at the Common Core standards for the, they're, they're fairly dense, and how do you make sense of it? And not that you'll make sense of it, that's probably not the right word. How do you understand what are the key learnings for each grade and each discipline? And that's the kind of work that's been going on this year, really thinking about it. We focus on fourth grade and, well, anyway, we'll, we'll present that on the, and I'd like to have the curriculum leaders here because it's really a lot of been their thinking and work that's going into this. But I think it's definitely the right direction we need to go because the, the demands for that clarity are more important than ever as we sort of think about how we, we, we work with, rethink schools, which we're doing with the high school as well. And the work that we've been doing on this has had an influence also on the, the educational plan for the high school, so.
Tristan?
I'm just wondering if there's going to be any way that parents who are unable to attend the forum like last week are going to have a chance to give feedback.
So, and that's a very good question. So I've asked the principals to meet with their school council members, also to vet it through the PTO. So that's, that's a continuing work in progress. So that's the way we've been, we, is, that wasn't the first time that we've reached out to the community was through Vision 2020. We've been, we've, we've, I've asked principals to do that along the way. So again, it's, it's getting that feedback and it, it is looking at the feedback and being able to find ways to incorporate it into the vision. Some of the feedback is overlapping. Some of the feedback is in regards to how do we assess that we've reached, you know, that we've achieved what we've stated in the vision statement. And so those are, that type of process is like a work in progress.
Yeah, I guess the one thing that pops into my mind is that I'm thinking of high school and that there isn't really a functional, there isn't a PTO here. I mean, there's a school council, but there isn't a PTO.
Yeah, school council.
So I'm just wondering, how are you drawing in, you know, as, as the people go up the ladder, I'm wondering. And then I also have to apologize because I have to leave. I have a family issue that I, I mean, it's not an emergency or anything, but I just, I have to leave now, so I'm sorry.
Oh, that's good. But yes, I can, I can still, you know, work with Dr. Jangar to make sure that the parents of, you know, students at the high school have an opportunity to vet the statement as well.
Right. Actually, that is one of the things, one resource we want to also incorporate into this is the students. And so we have to figure out how to, to do that. And we have a lot, we have a lot of very, very thoughtful students who I think will be helpful in this.
Artwork.
Oh, artwork.
I'll do it later. I'll do it later, sorry.
Okay. So I thought tonight I was reporting basically not all the district goals, but certainly the three. But one of them is, is the reports every, every week, every other week on the buildings, which is coming up very soon on the building reports. So does anybody have any questions? And, you know, if you'd like to have something written up? I'd like to give you, I don't know how many of you have, you probably haven't had the, the notes to the Gibbs parents? Let me get all that together for you. And you can see where we are at that.
Are these notes that you've sent to the parents?
Uh, Kristen Di Francisco sent in newsletters.
All right. Should we move on to the financial report or do you?
How about the, I got a question on the calendar.
Oh, the school calendar, I'm very sorry. School calendar's the next thing, right.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
On the calendar itself, we don't put down the conference days as such?
You, yes. The answer is yes, you will.
But they're not on here right now.
They're not. And the reason why you're getting this tonight is that we want to notify all the new kindergarten parents. And remember, we held off on this because we wanted to talk with kindergarten teachers and principals. And after they've discussed, there's a kindergarten leadership team, too. And they said they really liked the way we've been doing it, stick with it. And the principals say, we're fine with open house on Tuesday, primary day. They're fine. So we want to get this out to them. We have a informational letter that's going out to all registered kindergartens. In fact, where we are right now is we have, just as, since you brought up kindergarten, we have 433 students, and we just sent out 188 letters of, of, to families of students who are kindergarten-aged, identified on census.
And just one other one, I, I--
Who have not registered.
So how many numbers do we have?
We're up to 433.
Okay, sorry.
And we sent out 188 letters.
We may have already discussed this, and I apologize for bringing it up. On December, we have a November 29th and then a 13th and 20th in December. Those are the ones in December, those, two of those are usually to discuss budget, elementary and secondary budgets and stuff. I'm just wondering about the 20th. Are we all happy with, I know it's tight. I don't know whether if we want to do one of the budget ones on the 29th of November.
I think as we get closer, we can make a change.
Fine.
Because the other way, you would have three meetings--
Yeah, I agree.
Twenty-nine, six.
I'm not looking for three back-to-back.
That's why we did that.
Yeah.
I think so, Kathy, you want to motion for us to approve this?
Yes.
Okay. So any motion to approve the calendar? Would that change?
So moved.
Second, a motion by Doc, by Cindy Stark, second by--
I'll second it.
So, any discussion or questions for the superintendent? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. It's six-zero. Now we have the John's report.
Thank you. In your packet, you received a copy of the financial packet for a period ending February 28th. First thing you may have noticed was that the projected unencumbered balance went down quite a bit and was getting closer to zero. That's just more of a methodology change, methodology change rather than some big unexpected expenses. So what we did, what we were able to do was we were able to drill down a little further. As, the further we get along, the more closely I think we can estimate the substitute line, which at the beginning of the year was one of our biggest problems. It's been, it's, it's been cut at least in half since then. We're able to take a good look with the facilities department and kind of look at their open POs and, and what they expect. We put a number in for snow and ice removal that I think will be high. I, I think given that, we put that in before the last couple of storms, and one of them didn't materialize. So I think we'll be able to, at the next meeting, maybe bring that down a little bit. And so we did that in, in all the cases, and we'll continue to do so before the next report, continue to meet with department heads, technology, and sort of take a look at, at where we are. Do we have POs that we can close? Do we need, are there, are there things we're, we're missing? So as of right now, we're not projecting having a deficit. Is it going to be exactly the, just over $8,000? Probably not, but, you know, it's the best case right now. You may notice also that the total, the report that includes all three reports shows a, a balance that's negative. That's more of a function of there's two, there's a, two accounts in the revolving accounts that we've collected more revenue than we've projected. So the formula in the revolving accounts just assumes that we're going to charge the same amount of expense to revenue. So it looks like we're charging more expense than we have budgeted. What we would do is if we were going to do that, we would change the budget amount, too. So that doesn't necessarily, that hasn't been accounted. We haven't already moved that saying we're not going to charge it to the operating budget because it's going to move there. So it's not like we're double counting it right now. If we do do that, it would free up some money in the operating budget, but I guess that would be something we would decide as we got closer. It's, it's preschool and Piercefield. So if we were to, if we were to charge a little bit more to those, then that would free up that money in the operating budget. But I just wanted to point it out because I didn't want the, the number is negative. I didn't want it to be, you know, someone thinking that there's a problem that we, we didn't talk about. But so, like I said, right now, I think we're still projecting to be pretty good. And I think it will get tighter and tighter as we go and be closer and closer to what the number that we're going to land on. And I think we'll get tighter and tighter as we go and be closer and closer to the number that we're going to land on.
When will we know the circuit breaker money? Does that come... Will we know that before the end of the year?
Yes. When they... Before, it'll be very close to the end of the year.
So that might offset any...
I would expect that the fourth quarter will change a little bit. It almost always does. As we get closer to that, we may get hints from DESE of what they think that's going to be. But as far as getting the money, we won't get it till the end of the year.
Yeah, I realize that. Thank you.
Any other questions on report? Okay, now we move to... Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So now we have a good end of year picture. Is there a step where you go back and look at what you put in your budget to see if there are significant discrepancies? And can we get... If you do do that, can we get some sense of areas where we may need to shift around or that we're short?
Great, thank you.
Okay. Now we move on to the superintendent's report, which actually dovetails with her report on goals as well because she took up the buildings.
I am.
Okay.
Actually, a number of things. I'll make it fast because I noticed we're off of our...
Yeah.
All right. Tonight, I can say with great confidence, surety, that our last day of school is going to be Monday, the 25th of June. The reason why is we now are hitting April. And once you hit April, even if you have another snowstorm or another emergency that school is out, as long as you've had your five days, five snow days, you don't have to make it up. So now this is when all the seniors want lots of snow. Actually, they're the ones. It's more the juniors, the freshmen who hunt juniors.
Not the seniors, yeah.
But anyway, so that is June 25th. Unfortunately, we had to go across that weekend. It will be a half day. Our last day of school always is. We already talked about the trivia B. And I also want to thank AEF. I mean, this is a major fundraiser and thank you for everybody who participated in it. I will mention one other costume that was just so clever, and that was dallin'. They were called the Cirrus dallinators. They dressed up like gladiators from Rome. And they did pretty well. I also want to... Tonight, she was here earlier and some of you were able to meet her. We now have a new principal for Hardy beginning July 1st. Catherine, actually she prefers to be called Kate Parrots. And a press release was sent out, released this weekend in talking about Kate. But really pleased that she's going to be joining us. I have to say, it was such a strong field of candidates that we had. I know when parents left that evening, of the parent evening to meet the candidates, I can't tell you, there are people who said, "Well, I don't relish your job to have to choose" because they really were terrific. So we feel very fortunate that she will be here July 1. In fact, she's already been conscripted to Hardy next week to be a reader on their literacy night. So she's starting to transition there. I also, we haven't met since the students had their walkouts these last two weeks. And I can't say enough of how mature they were in how they organized the work, walkouts and planning it involving all of the different people that needed to be present, which included the police for their protection. At the high school, they had a podium and they're...
How they organize the work of walkout?
Are you recording the superintendent?
Maybe he has the students. They... They're actually covered by Channel 7 and we had a microphone. So their speeches were heard in some of the evening news channels. But they just... Everybody who worked with them on this was just full of praise for them. So I want to compliment. And I don't know about all of you, but I just feel so proud of the students in our country and the way they have taken leadership in this over the last few weeks. And hopefully we'll have some change in our country going forward with these very strong, passionate, organized and persistent students. I also want to talk about Gibbs Library, which I did not get in the other part. This has been something that, as you know, and the budget was not in there for books. But there are some... There are another source of income for the books. And I want to thank Community Education and David Whitford, who has asked his brother Bradley Whitford, who was in West Wing, Josh Lyman, to come and speak here on April 11th from 7:00 to 8:30 in Low Auditorium. And you can buy tickets online, Community Education, for $10. All the proceeds are going to the Gibbs Library. So we've been having the plans in works and it's all working out and it's just terrific. So I want to thank Community Ed, thank the Whitfords for providing this opportunity. We also have someone from the advisory committee who is going to be the lead person on acquiring books for Gibbs. Because we've decided that we will take in books that are gently used. And we're going to set it up in some kind of a database so people know if the book has already been donated, not unlike a registry. And we also have our head librarian for the district working on a list of books that we are going to purchase in order to make sure that we open with a fairly well-stocked library. I also want to thank...
I just, if I may, on the library. I appreciate all that is being done and everything, but because of financial problems we had back 10, 15 years ago, full-time librarians were dropped from the budget and we haven't put them back. We are at a strong disadvantage in our curriculum. We have a very strong curriculum, but the fifth grade students in Lexington have research skills that some of our high school students don't have. It's a primary thing and we need to find a way to get librarians, certified librarians. We're a wonderful training ground because our TAs become more and more adept at it, become certified, and we lose them, library TAs. And I'm asking this committee going forward to consider librarians at full-time. Minimum cost for books, setting up a library based on, and this is... I figure 450 students at Gibbs, 12 books, it's recommended per student to set up a library. And they recommend $25. I put in a $15 figure. That's $81,000 just for the books. It's a lot of money and I appreciate everything that you're doing, Dr. Woody. I mean that sincerely, trying to get us going and stuff. We need to make this a priority and not depend on each individual teacher for the research. We need good, strong librarians certified. Not that our TAs aren't doing a great job, but we need them to support our teachers in the research. Thank you.
I think that's... I think we would all like to have full-time librarians. I mean, this may be a goal that we need to have for the district. Certainly, it's... Would be terrific. It would cost probably about a half a million dollars to do that.
Easy, I agree.
But I do want to compliment our teachers and because there was a lot that was done in the social studies department, teaching students how to do research. And I don't want to put you on the spot to talk about it, but the social studies department has done a terrific job in setting out the whole framework for how research is introduced throughout all the grades. And I know you do a lot of that. So, but that's not to say that we don't need librarians. I'm not trying to undermine that point at all because I do agree with you. I think it'd be important to have that. But anyway, the person is Marion Hanley, who is going to organize that effort. And so we'll get that information out.
I had a question.
Oh, sorry.
So, I mean, do you know how much... Do you have any expectations of how much is being raised by this this community education event?
I hope a lot of people come out. It's a function of how many people come.
It's in the main auditorium.
It's in Low Auditorium.
The auditorium holds 900 people. And it's how much per ticket?
10. Or five for students.
What's the date and time again?
Five for students.
It's April 11th at 7 o'clock.
If people make donations on top of that, it's another, maybe 10 grand.
So, oh, you can make donations as well to the Gibbs Library.
I guess, I mean, that's, I guess that's the question. Because we had talked at Budget Subcommittee about this and whether there would be a fundraising effort or whether we'd use one of the revolving funds to fund this.
Yep.
So it's still... I was hoping that by the next Gibbs Forum, which is Monday, we'd have a clearer idea. So it sounds like we're doing this community fundraiser. We're kind of asking for contributions, but we're not really. We're kind of asking for books, but that's not organized yet. I still think by Monday, we need a sort of a clearer idea of where we're going. And I still think personally, and not speaking for the committee, that, you know, if there's $30,000 needed, $40,000, $50,000 to get a good library to open the building, we should spend that from our reserve funds, which are actually quite ample.
We have talked about the same thing. We agree with you 100%. We want to have the library. And so this is supportive of that. The Whitfords wanted to be able to support the schools in a direct way. And I think this is a good way for them to be able to do that. But yes, we will take money out of revolving accounts and we will also let people donate books because there's people who want to do that too, to be part of this process. So it'd be a multi... And we also have our head librarian who is helping us know what to order. I mean, that's a key thing as well.
Yeah, but I think she needs to know that her budget is a reasonable amount and not limited to what we're raising, you know, a couple of weeks from now.
She's aware.
So probably some of you know this, on that very night, interestingly, there is, at the Robbins Library...
Just sending them mail, like, "Oh, bad news, you need to move your forum."
A forum on promoting school librarians.
Library advocacy that night.
6:30 at the community.
I just sent a message saying I was going to try to go to both, so.
A lot going on. All right.
Okay, just quick things. Congratulations to our high school students on a fabulous play. Wonderful town. They were so professional and they... It was a really enjoyable night. And we talked about Vision 2020. Last night, I went to an event at Brackett and I just want to call this out. There was a group of Brackett parents who went again to AEF, which is the source of a lot of funding for great ideas, in which they have been creating posters for scientists of color. And it's called "The Color of STEM." And their first poster is outstanding. And so the thought is that there's going to be a series of these posters and we'll probably try to figure a way that these posters can also reside in the other elementary schools as well. So I think I got it all.
All right. I neglected to do the art presentation. So just before we get into the consent agenda, then I'm just going to do that right now. So this is from Thompson and Stratton. Karen Donato, the principal of the Thompson, and Michael Hannah, the principal of the Stratton, put this together with the help of our teachers, Deborah Campagna and Melody Wolf-Thomas. So A, Board A, what is TAB? T-A-B. Teaching for artistic behavior, or TAB, is a philosophy of art education that puts the child at the center. It focuses on students, their interests, ideas and choices. It views the child as an artist and the art room as their studio. Like adult artists, students select content and media for their work. They have full ownership of the process, direction and outcome of their artwork. The art teacher's role is as a facilitator, guiding students as they explore and problem solve. The art teacher provides time, space, materials and information so that students can develop ideas, experiment and determine the most effective ways to bring their ideas to life. In TAB, the product is secondary to the development of the child and his or her ideas. B, our TAB art program, we take children's art very seriously. Each class starts with a brief five to 10-minute lesson. At times, students may work on a skill builder, which is a challenge to help students learn a specific skill. For the majority of class time, students choose to work in centers on projects of their own design. Among the centers available to our students are drawing, painting, collage, fibers, construction, printmaking and ceramics. Projects displayed here represent students at all levels. Students choose their own work to display and reflect it on their work in artist statements. We encourage you to read their statements to hear their voices. So when you get a chance, take a look at their statements at the end of the meeting. And then C, how does TAB support all students? The stages of artistic development follow the same sequence for everyone, yet they do not happen at the same age for everyone. TAB naturally differentiates learning because students learn and explore at their own pace. The curriculum responds to student needs and connects with their motivations. TAB at every level guides children to think like artists. They become critical thinkers by implementing and working through their own ideas. Most of the artwork made in a TAB studio is not for exhibition. Play and experimentation are essential to creative development and confidence in artistic risk-taking. Process is valued over product to create an environment that supports creativity. So, that was supposed to be read earlier in the evening. We had all sorts of other things going on. Okay, we now move to the consent agenda. All items listed with an ASCRIS are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion. These items, unless a member of the committee still requests, in which event, the event will be considered in its normal sequence. Approval of warrant, March 15th, 2018, warrant number 18190 in the amount of $464,002.201. Approval of minutes, regular school committee meeting, March 15th, 2018. Approval of trips, host family exchange trip to France. Approval of meeting, school committee organizational meeting Thursday, April 12th, 2018 at 6:15, 6:15 PM. Kind of motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
There's your second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
It is approved. Subcommittee liaison reports, budget, Kersey has left the building. Community, anyone want to report on budget? Is there anything to report? Community relations?
We might have a meeting next week.
Really kidding me?
No.
No, I'm encouraging her to...
Until midnight on the end.
No, we have one more. The Human Rights Commission is done with all of their documents that we have been working with them to create. And if we can, I sent you guys two times that I could meet next week. So if we can, we'll do it. If not, we'll turn it over to someone else.
Yeah, okay, I'll let you know. District accountability?
No report.
Facilities?
I have no report.
Policies? School enrollment task force, no report. Legal services?
No report.
High school building committee, we meet. So Monday, we have, what is it? Tuesday, we have our meeting. Our regular meeting is at 6:00 PM. All are welcome. We're moving, there's a lot going on and that should be a longer meeting. You know, it might be two and a half hours, two, two and a half hours. It could be a long one. And then the following night, the 3rd of April, at 7:00 PM in Town Hall is a forum. And at that forum, we'll have some designs of potential options for the site. And so it's really important that people go. We're advertising this best we can and we'd love to have a good crowd there.
It's on Tuesday night or Wednesday?
Wednesday night, Wednesday the 4th, yeah. Tuesday the 3rd, I'm sorry for the confusion. Tuesday the 3rd is the building committee meeting. Wednesday the 4th at 7:00 PM is the public forum.
And Monday night is Gibbs.
Monday night is Gibbs, you're correct. Monday night is Gibbs. I don't know the forum.
Show and tell, show and tell, isn't it?
I can tell it's forum.
Yeah, the forum format.
Yes. There's going to be just introductions.
I'm going to do an introduction.
Overview, he's going to give a little bit, a quick timeline of where we've been, where we are. Adam Chapellane is going to report on the different sites that we looked at and why this site was chosen as the only realistic site for the high school. Then our architect, Lori Coles, and Matthew Jangar are going to talk about the space summary in terms of how the space relates to the ed plan and what are some of the... What are the square footage that we're looking for in general? Just an overview of all that. That's probably only going to be about 15 minutes. And then we're going to... Then Lori is going to look at the design options that the building committee will be looking at on Tuesday night. I understand we're going to have another option, maybe two more, but certainly one more option on Tuesday night. So for people listening, what the situation is this. In April, this is, we're going to deliver to MSBA basically three things. The educational plan, the space summary, and three options that we want to study more. So it's really... that we want to study more. So it's really just what we want to study more. Then, what will happen is we will take the next month and actually two months and study those three options and decide on what the preferred option is. So the big categories of options are renovation. And I think at this point, everybody, that's really not going to be one of the options. It's just not going to work. Then there is new. And then there is renovation addition. So within the new and the renovation addition, there's all these different possibilities. And we have to decide which ones we want to spend more time on looking at, essentially. With the goal that by July 11th, when we submit the next report to MSBA, we have decided on the options. So say it happens to be a renovation addition. We don't have to have exactly what it's going to be. We can, the broad strokes, because that's what happens over the next year, is the developing of that, the designs for that. So it's more at a higher level in terms of what are the options for the school. And that's the work. And so we have to deliver the, the second report mid-April, the third report, the, the second, the first report mid-April, the second one July 11th, to be at a board meeting at MSBA in late August. Once they agree, we all agree on what the preferred option is, that's when the schematics, design parts start. And that's, that's also going to be a lot of intense year as we plan.
So on the Arlington High School Building Project website, AHSbuilding.org, there are six early preliminary concepts. Is that sort of where the options are coming from?
Yes, yes. And it's going to be more, another one. So that's not complete yet, but we have it up there. And in fact, ACMI the other day asked for some designs so they could put it on their program. And I think there's some, yeah, the advocate does too. We want people to, to look at these and give feedback. And so on Tuesday night, we're going to ask people, among these options, which three would be your top three? So people are going to have a chance to give some feedback.
So, and if you could spread, you know, people are welcome, welcome to come to the meeting on, on Tuesday night, the, this building committee meeting, just to hear the dialogue. And there's public participation beforehand. But the 4th, the forum on the 4th, if you could spread the word to your networks, get people to come, that would be great.
This looks like a really fun event.
It is a fun event. Okay. Gibbs Committee, yeah. Did you have a question, Jennifer?
Oh, no, I have something else.
Okay, Gibbs Committee, any report? Okay. Liaison reports. Announcements?
I have a, I, it's sort of a liaison report.
Go ahead.
So I attended the Arlington School Enrollment Group, Facebook group, had a real-time gathering where they talked about their, their interests, their concerns about the schools. And they identified seven that they'd like to focus on. And there was a lot of discussion about them. One is about, and we've heard a little bit about this and we'll hear more, about after-school issues. I think that we, five years ago, we had a situation where even though there are waiting lists, there is overflow places that people could go to, Boys and Girls Club, Fidelity House. We're now seeing that those places have huge waiting lists. And so, so that model isn't working anymore. So there's a tremendous amount of interest, huge group of parents were in a corner discussing this issue. I said breakfast with somebody, Alham, discussing this issue and, and talked to her about coming up with some more information and potentially suggesting starting a committee. I'll make that suggestion next time we meet. The other issues that were, rose people's attention, certified librarians, diversity slash inclusivity, also had a big group talking about issues in the schools. Issues of how much the PTO is cover that they really see as not extra but more fundamental to the core curriculum. There was some discussion about recess also at a big group. And a discussion about gifted and talented programs. And we've lost them at the elementary school and sort of what we could do. So that was the big, big discussion. These are engaged, passionate group of parents. And I'm sure that we will not have seen the last of them.
Okay, thank you. Any other announcements? Okay. Future agenda items for the next chair. Yes.
So the.
Mark it down.
Not here, take down, but.
I'm not even going to mark it down. I'm not even writing it down.
Well, the other district goal that we've loved to have seen stuff on and that we're sort of, we have a deadline for various things coming up, is this issue about the safe and supportive schools, sort of the, the action plans that we're rolling out. Because this year was supposed to be the year to come up with those action plans. And we've, we've only seen hints of it so far.
Yes. Sarah Byrd will come, we, sometime again, there'll be this, probably sometime in May. We'll spread these out so we're not having everything in one night. But yes, we definitely want to have a report to the committee on that. Okay.
Len, you're here.
So I don't know if it's appropriate to do it now, but I'd like to refer the recess policy issued to the Policies and Procedures Committee. Can you motion to do that?
Yep, yep. So a motion by Mr. Carden to re, to refer the recess, recess policy issued that was raised tonight by one of the speakers to the Policies and Procedures Subcommittee. Second by Mr. Haner. Any discussion? I mean, it's sort of, it's sort of like means it goes on, but I, we're all going to be here with, I hope. We'll see. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously. So Karen, that's going to just be for the Policies and Procedures team for next session. All right, everybody. We are only seven minutes off schedule. To adjourn.
Yeah, I'm impressed. I'm impressed.
Executive session?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, Jesus.
We do?
We, are we going to exit for?
Just short.
No voting.
No voting. Okay. We're going to move into executive session.
All right.
And then I am passing the gavel. So I need a motion to, I'm sorry, let me read the, so we're going to move to executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union and/or non-union personnel or contract negotiations with union and/or non-union, which if held in an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect. To conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, in which if held in an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect, collective bargaining may also be conducted. A motion?
Make the motion?
A motion by Dr. Sue, second by Cindy Starks.
Yes.
We're going to go around and take a roll call, Len.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Six yeses and one missing person. All those, so the, the motion carries. We are now in executive session. Thank you, everybody.